Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the April 4th, 2018 meeting of the Danville Bull County Planning and Zoning Commission. We thank you for your presence and taking interest in the business of planning and zoning. We will begin our procedure in prayer. If you bow with me, please. Our God and Father in heaven, we thank you for this day and all the blessings of it. We thank you for keeping us safe through the night and through the storm. We thank you for this community we live in and this country we live in, the freedoms that we enjoy, the safety and protection you've given us. Pray for our servicemen and women who continue to serve our country and defend our freedoms, and pray that you would bless them, keep them safe, keep them from harm's way, return them home to their loved ones as soon as possible. Be with us as a community and commissioners today, and pray that the decisions we make will be in accordance with your will, betterment for all those involved, and particularly for the betterment of this community. Guy Guard Director says all things. Pray in Christ's name, amen. First item on the agenda is to approval of minutes, March 7th, 2018. Jeff moves, we approve.
I second.
And Vince seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve minutes. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous. Thank you all very much. Item D, financial report. Anything on that you want to share, Steve?
No, sir. Glad to answer any questions. Send your packet.
Could you tell us briefly how we're doing financially?
Everything looks good. Our, as you guys can see, Lisa's filling in for Jenny today. Jenny's out on a short little medical leave. She prepared that report. You can see there's a balance sheet document in there, in addition to the expenditures, revenues against the budget comparison. So if you look at the balance sheet, there's also the farmer's bank for our general operating and that surety account, so as you can see, kind of holding right around that $100,000 range, again, in the bank account. And our year-to-date numbers are in the finance report. It's anticipated we'd be at about $80,000 at the end of the fiscal year on hand, so we're trending about the same as we were last month.
Questions or discussion on the financial report? I'll make a motion, we approve. Terry moves, we approve.
I second it.
And Mary Beth seconds.
Thank you.
Question discussion on the motion to approve financial report. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous. Item E, letters of credit.
I do have an item on that. There's not much on your agenda, but there is an issue I want to bring up to the commission under this, and just ask you guys to give me a small approval. As you guys know, we worked on Hunt Farm a month or so ago about getting Hunt Farm project off the cash bond list and getting that paid. This is the Maple Tree subdivision that we're also holding money on currently. You guys can see it's a 13-lot subdivision that's been on this list for a long time. I actually met with the HOA Association recently, and there is a couple unfinished items on this project that we'd like to get corrected. So, the HOA, when talking with the neighbors, everything is in place as far as streets, sidewalks, streetlights. Some of those items on the list that say conduit, really the only thing that's left to do is the drainage. And this is Lot 7 back here in the corner. It's unbilled on currently. That says retention area. There's supposed to be a drainage structure that was never completed on this project. So what's really left in the Maple Tree project is basically uncompleted drainage. And what we did is we, again, met with the HOA. This is Lot 7. We went out and took pictures. That's the storm inlet at the end of the cul-de-sac. That's the pipe in the storm inlet. This goes down the hill on that Lot 7. And it's a little hard to see with the lights, I guess, but this goes down the hill. This is the pipe at the bottom. What you don't see is a retention basin. So, I guess what we did, or what the developer did, was build the subdivision out, sold lots, built homes, and never completed the drainage. The HOA would like to see us get this project done. We would like to get the project done and get it off our books. We called $25,100 back in 2003. Several years have gone by, the drainage is not there. So what's happened over time now is the water is just sort of straight piping down to the back of the yards. Some sinkholes are forming, there's erosion, there's no basin. The solution is to build a, get the basin built, possibly have to redo the pipe, and then there's supposed to be, according to the city, another pipe and head walls here to get the water from the basin into a swell that gets us to Jackson Park Basin. So, and for full disclosure, Vince here is a neighbor in that neighborhood. He was at that HOA meeting. We met with all the neighbors, and they would like to see the planning commission try to get this resolved. We got some challenges. Number one, Lot 7 has been sold. We'd have to get permission of that lot owner to get on that property and construct a basin. Number two, we don't have a design. We can't really find the hard drainage plans from back in the day. So what I'm asking you guys is maybe to give me permission to get some quotes from some engineering firms. I anticipate this being $3,000 to $5,000. We would use that escrow money, and we would try to get a drainage design and bid package put together. So if we had to bid this out on the street, we could bid it. We got $23,694 currently to construct this drainage structure, but it was never built. And again, if you go out there and get time, Lot 7, there's another interesting twist here, something very interesting. There's a lot of trees now on top of that plastic pipe. So again, not sure why there was plastic pipe used, maybe not concrete. And again, at the end of the hill, it's just an open pipe. There's no basin, there's trees, and now there's sinkholes and erosion. So the developers, long gone is what I've been told, filed bankruptcy. We called the money in 2003. It's 2018, and there's no basin for the neighborhood. The city's willing to participate with us on this. However, they're pretty busy, and trying to get a design done and get a build or construction project done seems to be a challenge for all of us. But so that's why we thought if we could talk to an engineering firm, get some quotes, I could come back to you guys and let's see if we can get a game plan on how we could complete this project and get it finished. I'm glad to answer any questions on that, but today I'd just like to get permission to get some quotes and bring them back to you guys at the next meeting.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Vince.
I make a motion that we try to get some quotes on this.
I'll second it.
Have a motion to give Stephen permission to proceed with getting quotes to hopefully get this project finished. Mary Beth is second. Question discussion on this motion to proceed with efforts to finish this project. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item M, subdivision plat approvals. We have six of those, so I guess we need to take those individually. Catherine Bright, plat for subdivision plat on Pope Road.
Mr. Chairman, I guess we'll, we got a lot of folks here for some other cases, but again, the surveyors are here. If you want them just to come up one by one, if you want me to quickly give you a summary. However, you guys want to go through these six plats? Glad to answer any questions or let you all look at if you have a question.
Technical correct.
Yes, all six plats that you're going to hear went through technical review, met all the requirements, have been revised and turned back in for the packets. Pope Road, I'll just real quick. Pope Road's a 5.5 acre tract. There's been several parcels that are for sale out there. Big Farm, it's been for sale, that you can buy lots, and this is another tract coming off that parent farm. There's already been a couple platted next to it.
Nancy, any comment on this, please?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. Make a motion, we approve. Terry moves, we approve.
Second.
And Jim seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Thank you, Nancy. Number two, Center College plat for approval subdivision plat on McMillan Row and Louise Street.
Yep. This plat will lead into three projects you're going to hear today. Center College has a proposal to basically build a dorm on this tract of land, a site plan. What needed to be submitted prior to that, we realized there was a zoning issue we needed to address, and obviously a plat needed to be filed to consolidate the lots. So the plat is just really a, you know, the first part of this. The plat has to be revised to provide a footprint to build the project if successful at the site plan level. This is consolidate some lots into a six-plus-six acre tract right there where the old soccer field is on the north side of the campus. Again, Nancy Estes, survey engineer of record here, that's representing that plat. And we're going to get into more detail with the zone change at site plan level about the project.
Sure. Questions? Anything on this, Nancy? Okay. Do I move, we approve? Terry moves, we approve.
I second.
Vince seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous. Thank you. Number three, Irene Pennington, subdivision plat Cream Ridge Road.
Yes, sir. Kendall's here, represent that plat. This is pretty straightforward, taking a piece off the back property and combining it to a gentleman's property that you see. It comes out to 31.665 acres. So again, we're also reestablishing the lot line between the parent track. And can't do anything we need to add on that, that you think of?
No. It is as you described it.
Hopefully. I'd be glad to answer any questions. That piece that's being bought, again, is down at the southwest corner, being added to the property that fronts the road.
So this is just take, converting four lots to six lots?
They're out of order in your packet, you guys, and we're looking at the...
Regency Estates. We're at these two lots, and now they're converting...
No, we're doing the, we're doing the, sorry.
One of Vantage. One of Vantage Engineering.
Kendall's got another one. I think they might have got out of order in your packet. The one we're looking at is...
Go ahead, Kendall. They're looking at the plat. This is Kendall.
You should be looking at the Pennington property.
Pennington. Pennington on Cream Ridge.
We can get another plating package with the fans here.
Vote for him. Vote for him. Okay.
Jeff moves, we approve. And Jim seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous. Thank you, Kendall.
Thank you.
Number four, Regency Estates, Wellington Place, East Main Street.
Regency Estates is a previous plat. It's an older subdivision, and the six lots that you see on the original subdivision plat, these were four lots, so we're converting, we're making the lot smaller, changing four lots into six.
Terry moves, we approve.
Second.
Jeff seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kendall. Item five, David Connie Adams, subdivision plat Webster Road, Perryville.
This is our third firm here, AGE. It's got the next two plats. This one's, again, this is a cleanup plat. This is actually for a sale for one of the, for the owner of Track 1. If I'm not mistaken, and you can correct me, but I believe the septic or lateral lines were maybe slightly off the property. These properties were bought by deed, and the Adams property, again, it was bought by deed. That's a small, that's a 5.92 acre, which would be kind of the east side. Had to convey some property to the other track so that owner can sell their property to someone else, because the bank or some point, at some point, it was realized that the septic system wasn't completely contained on Track 1. So, that's what we're doing. We're reestablishing Track 1 now with its full septic system on its property, and the other track is still what's remaining that was purchased, again, by deed, and it should total 5.92 acres. That would be the Adams piece. Is that right? I guess, pretty close.
Is this yours, Dale? Any comments or any share, things to share on this? Thank you. Thank you.
Move for approval.
Jeff moves, we approve.
I second.
Mary Beth seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous. And number six, David Angel McKinney, subdivision plat Chestnut Grove Road, Park.
Again, this is interesting, and it's basically, again, retracing a piece of property that was bought by deed. And the way I understood it, the property was bought by deed was understood to be some amount of acres. Turns out it wasn't that amount of acres. A survey was done to determine exactly the amount of acres of the property, which are now shown on this, and then the property owner has also been cutting this into two tracks that you see are both about 18 acres in size. But again, both of these, this property was bought by deed. Again, the way I understood it was maybe some amount larger than 38 was understood, and turns out it's 36, 37 acres. And if we're doing the survey, then they're re-dividing it at the same time. Brings an interesting point on the prior one, and this one, a lot of properties are bought by deed. We're not, we don't require plating at certain levels, and I guess that's why you get title insurance and those type of things. But it is interesting that there could be discrepancies that much on some of these deeds. So this is a cleanup plat for the property owner.
Comment on it, Dale, anything? Okay.
The only thing that's a little bit different about that plat is guys, Steve said, all of the adjoining around the property, we just had all of those people to sign off on the plat because the deed was so late. So that would be the only thing that was a little bit different about that plat, but we felt like we should do that since the deed was that big and they were about 22 acres short.
22 acres. Wow. Get your attention, I would think.
I move, we approve.
Jim moves, we approve.
I second.
Mary Beth seconds. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Item G, public hearings. Number one, Walmart Real Estate Business plat for approval of a site plan amendment.
Yes, sir.
On Walton Avenue, 21.446 acres.
This is a redo. Walmart's here. Again, I appreciate those guys making five, six trips here already, maybe more. As you know, they had to get a conditional use permit, even though the building's been there for a number of years, because we have a standard that says buildings over 50,000 square foot are supposed to get a conditional use permit. It was built prior to that standard, so they've made two trips to the Board of Adjustments, and this is the second trip back to the planning commission for this expansion on the front corner of the building. They came before you guys just a little while ago for a 5,200 square foot addition for a liquor store or spirits shop on the front of the store. Walmart decided to do a little bit bigger building, another couple thousand feet, to make this 7,338 feet. That additional square footage is going to be a component that is inside the store for a grocery pickup, similar to some competitors around town, where you can order your groceries online and swing in and park, and someone brings your groceries out to your car, already prepackaged, prepaid. So that building grew just by a couple thousand square feet. Walmart's legal guys thought we need to come back to the planning commission and revise the site plan, so we have the accurate square footage on the site plan, as well as the Board of Adjustments. It was below probably our threshold to come back and revise the site plan, but they were looking at it more like, well, we proposed 52, now we're 73, as opposed we're adding 2,000. We'll just come back and do a new site plan approval for the 7338 square foot and get it all buttoned up nice and clean for the, for the legal folks back wherever they're, Arkansas, I guess. So they're back, and again, not much there. They gave us pretty detailed exhibits. Jerry's got a great big pack of full set of plans, and you guys got four sheets. And the third sheet in your packet actually is a nice grayscale that shows the building expansion, a little better than the front summary sheet. And again, the building's on the front corner. Construction has started for the footer foundation, and again, the liquor side store has to have an external exit, no connection to the inside store, but the other little part of the building, again, will connect to the main box, so folks can order their groceries and pick them up. And the parking spaces are all nicely detailed on how that will work for those kind of pickup traffic. You want to add anything?
Yeah.
You drove a long way.
Steve, clarify why we have this under public hearing?
Our zoning ordinance requires that any building expansions that are more than 25% or 3,000 square foot, whatever's greater, requires a site plan approval. So Walmart is growing their building by 7,338 square feet, so it's over the three. Again, they came before us for the 52, and I looked at this like just another 2,000 square foot expansion, but Walmart said, well, we're really scrapping Plan 1, and this is Plan 2. We just prefer, I kind of gave them the option to come back and get this completely approved as a 73,000, or 7,300 square foot addition, which would be over our 3,000 cap.
So anything over that, we have to have a public hearing for?
Anything over 25% or 3,000 square foot, whichever's greater. This came out to about 2% expansion on this building. They also had to make two trips to the Board of Adjustments.
Okay. Thank you. Question discussion from the commission with regard to this.
Motion to approve.
Let me, we'll hold that in a moment. This being a public hearing, we do provide opportunity for the public to comment either for or not in favor of this plan that Walmart is presenting. So if there's anyone here in the public that would like to speak for or against this plan, you're certainly welcome and encouraged to do so. Hearing none. Jeff, go ahead, please.
I make a motion for approval.
Jeff moves, we approve.
I second.
And Vince second. Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor. Vote unanimous. Item two, Danville Bull County Planning and Zoning Commission and Center College filed an application to rezone 11 sections of the campus containing 105.91 acres. And I will add that there have been several questions about what's all these yellow signs about on Center's campus, and...
Well, I'll start with that. Newspaper does a good job, I'm sure, with the ads, but I'm telling you, those yellow signs work. All these folks are here, and it is ironic, I think, that the sign police went out and littered up the campus with signs, but that's what we have to do in a zone change, unfortunately. And this is a very unique case. You guys have a detailed staff report in your packet, and one thing you notice right off the bat, this says the Danville Bull County Planning Commission and Center College filed this application. We are co-applicants, the staff and Center, and I will explain that. It's a very unique zone change, and we've got some exhibits to show you guys. This is a housekeeping exercise. It's long overdue, and again, relates to the site plan case that's later. Normally you guys hear site plans and zone changes. We flipped those in this order, because what started all this was a project that Center wants to do on the north part of the campus, and I'll try to show you guys that. What we call the old soccer complex up here. There is a project up here for a dormitory. This is the, this is the campus as we know it, 105.91 acres. And when we sat down with the Center folks, and we got several representatives here today, and they're going to speak, we realized that the campus, most of the campus is zoned small lot residential. GRB, as we know it, is general residential small lot. GRA is general residential large lot. Most of Center College, which dates back to 1819, I should have known that, but 1819, it's been here for a long time, and then zoning came into play around 1947. You would think Center was grandfathered in, they could go forward as they developed their campus, but somewhere along 1987, Center was required to get a conditional use permit, and then more conditional use permits, and then variance, 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 variance. Our files have at least a dozen to 18 cases of projects where, in a piecemeal fashion, Center had to come get variances, because most of the campus is zoned small lot residential. So when sitting down with some folks at Center and talking about the dorm project and getting the site plan ready, we realized we had all kinds of setback problems, because that area of the campus, again, is zoned residential, very similar to the neighborhood that is small lot residential. So it really didn't make a lot of sense, or we as a staff couldn't understand how Center could continue to evolve the campus in such a fashion, and we have a district in the zoning ordinance that was put in in 2004 called Institutional Campus Development District. It's for campuses and big schools and big churches and academic facilities. So I guess one question we all had, Center College and the staff, is, you know, why wasn't this conversion made in 2004 when that district was created, in a sense, for Center College? It probably was because it would have been big and a lot of work, and it has been a lot of work to get it to this point. So what the staff proposed, that's us, is that we would convert the entire campus to what it should have been, at least in 2004, if not all the way back when zoning was first enacted, whatever district that should have been, whether it be commercial or whatnot. But there's actually seven different zoning districts that sit on that footprint right there. So there's a lot of folks here, I'm sure, because we sent letters out to everyone that touches the campus, just like we would have to on any zone change. We put signs all over the campus, and that's why a lot of people are here, and they got this exhibit. Now, some people got an exhibit because they're adjacent to the site plan, and a lot of neighbors got an exhibit because they touched the campus. And the folks that called, we tried to explain, and I hope we did a decent job, but that nothing's changed on the campus. All we're doing, eventually, if the site plan's approved, is doing a project up here north of Main Street. Everything's staying in place. Everything's just being converted as a housekeeping exercise to get those seven zoning districts into the proper zoning district. And before I get into the future land use map, you guys got zoning maps, and our zoning maps are evolving. This shows you all the different zones. This is small lot residential. This is large lot residential. There's GRC, there's commercial, there's industrial. This is the side of the campus we're talking about, the site plan. As you can see, it's all small lot residential for small homes. And so as Center got ready to do their project here, it was very obvious they were going to have to go get several variances, continue this process of going to the Board of Adjustments in a piecemeal fashion every time they do a project. So again, we suggested that we would do this together as a housekeeping exercise and get this thing cleaned up and move on, and then down the road, future projects would be site plan approvals. Going back, as you know, we look at the comprehensive plan in every zone change request. Page two of your staff report says that normally on a zone change, applicants are required to submit conditions. We did not require any conditions on this, again, because this is a site plan approval, or a cleanup approval, and there's really no conditions that really apply to a 105-acre zone change of that nature. We did look at the comprehensive plan on page three, though, just like we always do, and all the goals and objectives, as you see, oddly enough, Center College and rezoning of this magnitude meets several of those goals and objectives about infill development and developing where you have the best infrastructure. Center's not proposing to grow outside of their footprint one inch. They want... They want to put a dorm on the property they already own. We just want to get it zoned so then the setbacks work better.
Can I ask a question? We'll get to that.
Yeah, yeah. And, and Jerry, I'm good with ever, how you ever want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
Well, let me just finish up on the staff report. Future land use map, also is what we look at. This is Center College. It is shown as public, semi-public, under our current comprehensive plan and our future land use map. So interesting enough, again, the future land use map shows Center College as public, semi-public under the comp plan. So it is in compliance with the future land use map. It also meets the state directive about inappropriate zoning or zoning that was mislabeled. There is an option where a developer can come forward and say, hey, my zoning's not right. It should be one versus the other. So together, actually, they meet both criteria, the state directive and the comprehensive plan directive, to make this conversion. And, and again, just to keep it kind of simple, we're, we're only converting everything that they already own. We're not converting anyone else's property around the fringe. We're not changing anyone else's zoning. And the only project that's being proposed would be the site plan approval, which is the next case up on the north side of the campus. And I'll kind of leave with that. And now, Center's got some folks here and, and I think they may want to, or they might want to wait to the site plan approval and talk about, but either one. And I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys may have or anyone from the public.
We'll wait.
Good morning. I'm Jamie Leahy from Center College. I'm the vice president for legal affairs. I think you all have seen me up here before. I'll just talk about this, excuse me, briefly. In terms of the zone change, as Steve said, this was a, a, a matter of cooperative endeavor of talking about our project and then how we might best arrange the campus, how we might best work with the local community, the local boards to make our campus, irrespective of the project actually, more harmonious with the future land use plan and getting our zoning in harmony with what the local, local boards are looking for. So that's why we're here for the zone change, but several of us are here from Center. I'm here obviously answering any questions you may have or, or anybody else may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from the commission with regard to the zone change proposal?
Mr. Chairman?
Can I ask my question?
Yes, Henry.
If I might jump in real quick, Mr. Leahy, did you want to say anything about setbacks or dimensional standards? Can't remember if Steve covered that or not.
It might be, it might be good to note that one of the aspects of the, of the ICD zone is that, is something about setbacks. And I would like to say for the record that our, we believe our campus is fully in compliance with those setbacks, particularly if you consider our, our primary, our main buildings well within the 80-foot setback, if you consider my, our main building of Old Center, several hundred feet, what, you know, fronted well setback from the, the road that it fronts. So thank you for that. I just want to talk about our actual compliance with the ICD zone.
And Jerry, let me just, in your packet, I hope I put that in there, but there is the ICD standards. If you're not familiar, we keep saying ICD for the folks in the crowd, that's Institutional Campus Development District. It was put in the zoning ordinance in 2004 and it specifically mentions academic institutions, religious institutions, government. And again, this is supposed to be bigger stuff that, that evolves and sits in a campus-like setting. It has very few standards, it has some setback standards, a main setback and then kind of house secondary buildings setback, assuming they're on bigger parcels as opposed to individual parcels, but can be on individual parcels. It has architectural standards, suggestions, and that's the whole section of the zoning ordinance there. Barely three pa, two in it, well, looking at that gap, barely two pages long. That district was envisioned for campuses, religious organizations and academic, and it's not been utilized in our county much. We have a similar district that, for industrial development. So again, it was interesting to us that most of the campus was zoned residential, small lot residential at that. It's just goes back to original zoning and it's just staying in place over time. And then the decision to get conditional use permits and variances case by case by case as opposed to converting the zoning to the most appropriate zone for the campus. And then still into the future, any projects would have to still come to the planning commission and get site plan approvals. And there still may be need for some kind of setback someday, but we, we don't anticipate that.
Any questions from the commission? This being a public hearing, anyone of y'all that's like to speak in favor of this zone change proposal? Come to the mic, please introduce yourself and your address.
My name is Gerald Lunney, L-U-N-N-E-Y. I live at 141 St. Mildred's Court. So we abut the, the property there and I really have a question. I don't have anything about this except it, the, the picture shows a building that doesn't exist and I just wonder what the, the situation is on that.
Well, sir, we're just talking about the zone change at this point. We're not talking about any buildings at this point.
Okay, well, I just have that question to wonder if, if there's any problem with this because of that situation.
Well, we'll get to the building aspect after we deal with the zone change.
What he's suggesting, Jerry, is the conceptual exhibit that you see there, it was turned in by the architect. This is an exhibit out of the future master plan for Center College. Depicts a building that a couple neighbors in that area says is no longer there, up in the very, very tip. There was, there's a building or two that may be shown or not shown that they say is not accurate on this conceptual plan. I can tell you the footprint that we're zoning that equals 1.10591 is accurate down to the blocks, but the conceptual plan on actually what's sitting there currently, whether it be landscaping or a physical building, has, has been raised by a couple neighbors to us. And I think it's in this St. Mildred area over here, there's a building that maybe is either shown or not shown on this conceptual plan. It's caused a little bit of concern.
Anyone else like to speak in favor of the zone change proposal? Hearing none, anyone like to speak against the zone change proposal? Hearing none, we will proceed. Any other comments or questions from Center or Stephen or commission? Any, any other things at all?
We've got a question here, too. Good morning, everyone. My name is Nurya Sabate. I live at 599 MacMillan Street. I also teach at Center. And I have a question and it is the following. Will this affect following properties that Center College may acquire in the future? Will the zoning will automatically be transferred to future properties?
Stephen, you want to address that, but I'm thinking answer, no.
No, the, the zoning is just what we're proposing today is that is a legal boundary. It will just be this footprint. If down in, down the road, Center had another piece of property that's not here that needed, they'd have to come back and file another application. It will just be the, you see the 105.91 acres. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments with regard to the zone change proposal?
My name is Kevin Gray. My grandmother lives at 149 Louise Street. And I have a question on the...
Sir, give us your address, please.
My, I live in Nickersville.
Okay. Give us your address, please.
In Nickersville?
Yes.
Okay. I live at 106 Beachwood Drive in Nickersville, Kentucky.
Thank you.
I had a question about this, the parking lot on this, on this dorm. Why can't that be in front of the dorm instead of behind it?
We're not dealing with parking lots or dorms. We're dealing with the zone change at this point, okay? I mean, we're going to get to that. We're just dealing with the zone change.
I want to give him an exhibit if it's okay. Yeah, we're, we're at the zone change level. The site plan is next, which I think is going to be what we're going to talk about. Exhibits that you got as an adjacent neighbor was an engineering exhibit. This is actually a little bit more fine tuned for this, so I'll let you look at it for a minute. We're going to do this case next and then we'll let them tell you why they didn't maybe building parking lot flip. I think there's some considerations they were trying to make for the neighborhood, maybe why the parking lot's north side versus south side.
Okay.
But this is a little better exhibit and this is, this is first get the zoning correct and then we're going to talk about specifically this project and this project in the very next hearing and your question's valid. And I think the Center folks can tell you why they chose to not put the building here in a parking lot on the south side.
Okay.
And I'll give you that.
We'll get to that, just in a moment.
Thank you.
Any other questions with regard to the zone change proposal? For or against or just questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Vince moves, we approve.
Second.
And Jim seconds. Do we need to quote the, give me the correct terminology, Henry?
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that this motion incorporate the findings that have been distributed?
Findings, I couldn't figure findings, yes.
With, with a few small revisions, fixing the dates, changing the word parcels to sections and removing the paragraph that deals with conditions that are applicable to the zone change because there are no conditions.
Vince, you're...
I guess that's what I wanted to do.
Vince wants to approve that. Jim, you okay with the second on that?
Is this a document that has April 3rd in it?
Yeah, it's supposed to be April 4th, that's a typo.
Yeah, can we change that?
Yeah, that'll be changed April 4th.
Yeah, then I'm okay.
Okay. So you're okay with that motion and your second is still in place?
Yes.
All right. Question, discussion on the motion to approve with those amendments to the motion or additions, I guess I should say. Hearing none, all in favor? Motion unanimous. Thank you all very much. Item three, Center College has applied for approval of a site plan on the tract of land containing 6.627 acres on McMillan Row and Louise Streets. The property is now zoned, the zone that we just approved, whatever that actual title is.
Yep. Actually, it's a good point, too. The zone changes, unlike site plan approvals, still have other process to go through. You guys just approved a zone change recommendation, still has to go to the city of Danville for consideration for two formal readings. But it's interesting to note because the zoning has been tentatively recommended, it's not actually approved this moment till the city of Danville approves it. So now you're looking at a site plan which currently still has residential zoning, but is, there's a note on the technical document that the site plan, at what point it's developed, will be developed under the ICD or Institutional Campus Development District standards, at which time they move forward with a zoning permit. And of course, that doesn't happen until the city would ratify the zoning. So there, there's a lot of moving parts here. Again, backing up, all of this was because of this project that you see on the, the revised architectural drawing, that Center wants to build a new dorm on the north side of their property of the campus. And because of that, the zoning was problematic, the plat needed to be fixed. And to stay on a decent schedule, the zoning, the plat and the site plan have all come to you guys in one day. We know that the city still has to ratify the zoning and Center can't get started till that's done, which may take another month or so. And there's still a zoning permit and building permit well out into their future. The goal here is to get this project rolling fairly soon and the site plan's what's next. One of the confusions the, the law neighbors have raised, and it's our fault at the staff 100%, we sent adjacent letters as required to all the neighbors that touched the site plan footprint. And at that point in time, we had an engineering document that you see in front of you. And you can see the parking lot appears to go up and touch really tight to the McMillan right away. That was shifted back a little bit. Obviously, that, that's more kind of a, just an engineering drawing. That was an architectural drawing that was dropped on top and engineering drawing. We mailed out kind of a, a black line version that wasn't as detailed as this exhibit that you see in front of you that they got handed out to you today. Again, this has come from the architect, it just wasn't ready. So I had the neighbors got this exhibit, I think in their packet or in their letter. It would have probably been easier to understand. You guys should have 11 by 17 at your seats, I hope. And Jerry, there's an extra one at Wendy's seat right there if you need one.
We're good.
Okay. That shows what we're doing here with the site plan. So backing up just a second and Center's going to jump in here and give us some good detail. What they want to do is build a dorm on the north side. The hillside dorms that currently exist here would eventually be torn down and phase two would be a second dorm that you see runs kind of north-south. There's new parking in this area. There's existing parking already here, it would be expanded again later. Really, project one is the north part of this site plan concept. And, and backing up just another second, I think it's interesting to note and, and commend Center on, one of the things that's overlooked a lot of times on campuses are safety for students. And I've had the history of being involved with campus development and prior jobs and I can tell you, it's always nice to see when campuses make investment in dorms that'll now be fire safe, sprinkled. The things that you want kids in in modern dorms are real important and I understand the challenges on a historic campus, on how you put new buildings on a, on a campus of this style, yet have modern amenities, especially in fire safety for kids, students, whatever you want to say. It's important. And so I commend them for not just building a new dorm, but, but trying to meet the directives, I think, of keeping kids safe on campus because that's what we never want to have, is a situation that other campuses have had where older dorms that are in, just overseeing their life just become problems. So Center's got a game plan here to build a brand new dorm and then a second one and tear down some older dorms. All this parking, all this access would continue to be the same point. This access point is gated currently, it would stay gated. There's no connection to Louise, there's no connection to McMillan. This parking lot, and this gentleman just had a valid question here, this parking is on the north side of these dorms and his question was, why aren't the dorms this way and the parking on this way? And I'll let the Center folks address that because it's a valid point. Cars can disturb neighborhoods with car lights, with issues, but Center is going to landscape, possibly berm and fence this northern edge to be compatible with the neighborhood. They shifted the buildings back for just, they thought those would be more intrusive to the neighborhood, to have taller buildings closer to the structures in this backyard sense. They, they know that students warehouse their cars or typically come to college, park their cars, they don't drive them in and out as much as regular multi-family. They're going to try to address any car lights, parking lot intrusions through berming and landscaping potentially. The building is going to have architectural features on all sides, so it doesn't look like we're looking at the back of the building. And they thought it would fit better with the campus, the flow of the old soccer complex, the pedestrian movements, and this would be the kind of main entrance in and out daily. It would be less intrusive to the neighborhood with a gated lot, warehoused parking, no connection to Louise to set them here on the edge of this green space. Again, they did talk about flipping these two and we'll let them talk about why they thought that was a better layout for their campus and for the students. But again, this is what they're asking for the approval today, a 64,000 plus square foot building, 184 beds. That project would happen pretty fast if the site plan's approved, the zoning has to be approved, zoning permit has to be sought, a state building permit sought, and then Center could break ground and get going on this project. There's dirt work, sewer line issue, but this part, this footprint is for the future and some of this parking lot expansion. So they're coming in, getting the site plan kind of all approved at one point so they could come in later and when they get ready to do the other buildings, they've, you guys have already seen them all. That, that's a cookie cutter version of a lot of time and effort they've put in planning this project and I'll let them take it from there because I'm, I'm sure I'm not doing any justice on how much time they spent on thinking about this project.
Thank you, Steve. You did a really good job talking about...
Excuse, introduce yourself again, please, if it goes around another item.
Sure, this is Jamie Leahy, again, from Center College, vice president for legal affairs. Commends Steve for making a very good description of not just the project, but the process and our thinking behind it. I think it's evident that, you know, we're, we're a campus that has grown up in the town, in, in the neighborhoods. We, we had a, had a celebration of our founding, Founder's Day in January and conversation about our history, commented that when Center was founded in 1819 and when Old Center, our main campus building was built in 1820, it was built outside of town so that it could be away from the distractions and vices of, of, of the urban area. And that, that seems comical to us now, of course, but because the campus has grown and the town has grown. We've grown up together, we've developed together, I think mostly harmoniously. The, we've been, Center has been in the zone that we're talking about now for the site plan since the, since the 70s and right on, be, be ahead of that, since the 60s on Main Street, since the 60s where we brought the women over to the main part of the campus from Lexington Avenue. So we've been there a long time. And the soccer field was there in the, in the 70s, it was an inter... And the soccer field was there in the 70s, it was an inter-year-old field, we had a soccer team in the 80s. So the folks who've lived there, when we had soccer games, certainly knew we were having soccer games. It was loud and commotion, and people running around, and buses coming in and out, so, you know, they've endured that. What we intend is a more permanent settlement in a residential facility, but we also think a much quieter settlement. You know, certainly college kids and people in general can be loud, but what we're trying to do with this particular development, since it does come, you know, right up to a neighborhood that has been there for a long time as well, is try to design the layout and the functionality and the parking lot and the buffer zones, so as to minimize the impact of this development on our neighbors. As Steve talked about, what's in our site plan is a buffer zone of 25 feet north of that parking lot that you see over there, which we intend to have heavy landscaping, an earthen berm, so that as cars pull into it, the headlights will be going right into a little hill, instead of going, you know, going into the houses. We would intend some kind of fencing, you know, we haven't yet talked about, you know, whether it'll be, you know, eight foot, six foot, whatever we can, and we have time to talk about that, as people are interested in that. But what we have in mind is about an 80-foot gap between McMillan Street and where our building is, so it's set back quite a bit. And we did that on purpose, so that we could try to have, you know, space between our building and the road. The parking lot, we, as Steve talked about, we talked about the location of that. What we're trying to do with our development over there is to maximize the interior space and the interior activity of that development, so that as the students are frolicking and throwing frisbee and doing whatever they're going to do, they'll do that on the interior, not on the exterior of these buildings, which would be more disturbing, we think, to the neighbors. We want to focus all that on the interior, so we want to kind of surround those buildings with the parking lot, which, you know, most of our students, like Steve said, don't drive their cars every day, they're going to sit there. Surely, they run in and out, but for the most part, this is just an accessory use, we make them work too hard to be in their cars all the time, they will mostly just be sitting there, the cars built. So we want that to be an accessory, just, you know, an occasional use with what they're really doing in their day-to-day lives, focused on the interior. So part of that is developmental for them, part of that is to try to develop more of a residential feel than a chopped-up feel, and part of it frankly is trying to minimize the impact on the neighbors, and that's what we're trying to do. You know, people can tell us they have different ideas, and we have heard from people, we have heard from people of the neighborhood, more one at a time, but, you know, so we are trying to make, you know, adjust some plans and think about that. You know, I think when we're, next spring, if we're in this project, and, you know, we are trying to open this dorm by fall of 2019, which we're kind of working quickly. We're trying to line up our financing, line up all the projects, you know, got the architectural drawings. This is not a surprise for us, because whereas, and you all know this, because you helped us develop our, what we call, what we call the "south fields," where the, you know, the tobacco warehouse and some industrial buildings were south of our campus. We moved our soccer field from that location to that location, south of our campus, so that we could develop this project. So this has been several years in the works, you know, again, but now that we're thinking, okay, we're so tight on campus, and it really is a good thing for a small college in America to grow. It's not automatic, and a lot of them are not growing. It's a good thing for us to be able to grow a little bit at a time. We need the new residential facility to really just accommodate the growth that we have. So I will leave it at that. Obviously, you all may have questions, members of the public may have questions of us, we're here to help.
Okay. Questions from the commission? Vince, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't know, it might be cathartic to some of the questions that might come from the audience, but it would seem that having the buildings, I mean, I go on that street a lot, the very north street there, I always go home that way, and it would seem like that the people who live there would be looking at two buildings, rather than the green space. I don't know if that means anything to the people that live there, but it would seem like if the buildings, I just was measuring, and it would seem like if the buildings were put here, on the bottom place where you have the common building, there'd be more green space for the people that are used to green space, the people that live there and are facing the campus. But I don't know if that's an issue, it's just a talking point, you know, if everybody's happy with having the buildings there, I mean, I'm happy. But I think that, you know, actually, you're cutting off their neighborhood then from the campus, whereas before, I think it was part of the campus, almost because of the soccer field. The soccer field, when I look that way, I look at the green, and I don't mind seeing the kids romping around once every two weeks, and practicing over there, you know, it makes me feel good again. But at the same time, I mean, I think that's one of the things we need to consider about it, and the plan looks beautiful, I mean, the drawings are beautiful, everything's beautiful. But I'm just trying to be maybe devil's advocate, in a sense, because it's going to change the people who are looking south, it's going to change their view a lot, no matter what side you put the parking lot on. I don't think that's a big issue to me, I just think it's all too close to the houses, myself. And I know this area here, I mean, this is going to be nothing here, right? The white section's going to be torn down, that's the old international...
It's sort of where it is.
Yeah, yeah, sort of where it is, yeah.
The hillside houses.
Yeah, it doesn't look exactly right to me, but when that's torn down, that all is going to be green space, and that's great for the campus. But I don't know if that's as good for the people who live on the very north side of our campus there. I say "our" campus, because I taught there for many years. And I want both things to be compatible, and I'd really hate to see people unhappy about the dorms being there, rather than maybe some other angular kind of a deal based in that green space, and then adjusting, since you're going to be building, now when you're building these buildings, it's going to be noisy and loud for at least a year, right? So, I mean, that's another aspect for the community that they have to think about, you know, trucks coming on that street and all that. And so, I don't know, it would seem to me that the entrance would be where the current circular is, you know, the turnaround. I don't know, what's the name of that street, McMillan Street, is that the name of it?
McMillan is on north, Louise is on the west.
Is it Louise? Okay, yeah, but it would seem like that would be a more, there are less houses affected, there are going to be houses affected when they're building, period. But it would seem like if you're going to build up in that area, this other area would still retain green space, and you could also figure out what you can do to make that look better, because I don't think that fence is very, very compatible to the campus even, that chain link...
The current fence?
The chain link fence.
We'll probably change that.
Yeah, that's what I mean. You know, because we're talking about beautifying.
Sure.
And, you know, so it would seem like some sort of a not-too-high wall, either walling the students into a prison, or something too low that people be hopping over it all the time. I know that's always, you know, that's a, on any campus, it's very tough for any kind of security on any side of the campus, they're all open, it brings up other issues, but I think the main thing is to keep it, the housing that's there, having at least the value it has. I wouldn't want to, myself, I wouldn't want to have a dorm there, you know, if I was going to sell my house.
Let me address some of your thoughts about the placement of our residence hall in that space where it is.
Exactly.
Part of it has to do with topography of the area and where we can locate a building. It's hilly, you know, you might remember, it's a bowl over there.
I know, I know. I fell down that hill once, so I...
And part of it, too, is we're trying to, when we do a project, we try to think long-term, not just this particular project, but what we may need to do in 10 years, 20 years. And Centers, we're celebrating our 200th next year, we want to be here another 200 years. We want to do this project thinking just the next 10 years. So if we have space, and you, I'm sure you understand, we don't have acreage just to expand outside our campus. We have to use the campus that we have to the best that we can.
That's why I brought it up.
Sure.
Because I understand that.
But if we put a building in the middle of that green space, now we're not able to maximize the land we have. What else are we going to do? Are we going to just stack buildings right on one another? If we, you know, if we reposition the building, well, down south, the larger building on the southern part, we'd have to do so much, we'd have to do so much land engineering there, I don't think we'd be able to do it. We put it over there, one, so we can try to maximize the usage of the land that we have, so we're not trying to, we don't have to buy up other property, so we can develop this. We are thinking decades into the future and trying to use the land that we have intelligently now, so that we don't come back in 10 years, my gosh, I wish we'd done that better. That is part of why we're thinking about trying to, you know, trying to conserve the space that we have, so if we need to use it in the future, we have it. I mean, I certainly appreciate your point.
Yeah.
I wish we had more land to work with.
Right. Jim, please.
So how many buildings are you talking about starting construction on at once? All those in brown, or...
Really, just the, it's one building with two wings on it. It's really just the one building there at the top of the map.
The north end?
The, 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 that one up there with the little red light on it. That's our, what we're calling our Phase One. We hope to get to Phase Two, which is the building just south of that, maybe the Commons Building down there. Those are up there as concepts for architects to see where we might put some things, but we don't, we don't have the plans yet, we're not proposing that yet, we don't have the financing yet to do that. But conceptually, as we try to build our campus a little bit more using that space, that's where we think those would go. We're not before you today to talk about those are the buildings.
Would the Commons Building go with that Phase One, or not?
No, no, it would be in a later phase, again, as we have funding for it.
And one more question, how do you envision the gate up there at the north?
Staying closed.
Staying closed?
Yeah, so, and I'm sure that's an important question for everybody. We don't envision traffic going on to McMillan or Rowe Street at all during the construction phase, I think that's unavoidable, but we will take whatever measures we can to make that safe, slower, minimize it as much as possible. But as we, as it's in use, we don't intend for, we would not intend for our students to go out that gate at all. We don't think that's safe for our students, we don't think that's safe for the neighborhood. And again, they don't, they don't go in and out all the time, but we've already talked about that, that we probably need a gate there for emergency purposes, emergency services purposes, but it's going to stay locked.
How do you calculate the number of parking spaces you need for the number of students you're going to be housing?
Is there one of my colleagues over there who can speak to that? Or Steve? Okay.
First off, one thing about the Institutional Campus Development District, it has no parking standard to start with. And a lot of universities that have campus development districts, because the reality is not all the students bring cars, each university has stats on how many students bring cars to campus, whether it be 70 or 80 or whatever. So it's not a one-for-one. Now, most campuses would love to have one parking space for every bed, it's just not achievable. But what you also don't want is a university to come in and plan a project, which they could do with a kind of a zero-parking scenario, and build buildings, just let the kind of hunt-and-pack, street parking be the way we park cars. That's what's most dish and generous to neighborhoods, and that's how a lot of campuses. I know one very well that has 20,000 students, 5,000 dorms, and only has about 2,000 parking spaces. That's how this evolves on modern campuses. So again, to put parking of a magnitude of that, to contain some of that parking on their site, I think again, shows the sensitivity to try not to have the parking scatter around the neighborhoods or on the street. But it's not realistic to have a parking standard of a one-for-one scenario in a campus environment. And again, even our parking standard for big boxes, Walmarts, Lowe's, is a percentage-based on the building. They tend to overbuild their parking to accommodate a couple max days of the year, but again, the parking they're showing, I think, is adequate, kind of falls in those percentages, but clearly, if the desire was to have one space for every bed, they would have to do a deck or parking structure or something somewhere on campus to accommodate that much parking space. But again, this district's kind of a flex district when it comes to some of these setbacks, building footprints and parking.
So does that mean I shouldn't ask the question?
No, 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 I think it's valid, but I think it's something that has to be thought about, and I think Centers trying to address it in some fashion on this concept plan, but the planning commission doesn't have a measurable number that we typically would have in a retail situation.
Sure. So, do you have an answer?
Sure, sure. And part of the answer is, how many can we fit in that space? But we also, we don't, excuse me, we don't promise our students that if they have a car, they can park next to their dorm. So we do have some other spaces, some other larger lots farther south and west on our campus and other places on campus. And again, like, most of our students don't use their cars daily, you know, some of the cars are used maybe once a week, maybe once a month, just depends. So they don't really rely on their car, I know some of them do drive around campus, and I lament that, but mostly, they don't. So even if they live here up in the new development, that doesn't mean that they will necessarily have a parking space available to them. But we do have enough parking spaces on our whole campus, within our own property, that accommodate all the cars that our students and faculty and staff have.
That's important, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Go, sir, sir, sir. Go to the mic, introduce yourself, give your name and address, please.
Kevin Gray, 106 Beachwood Drive, Nicklestown, Kentucky.
Thank you.
It would make more sense to me to have a, since you're a landlocked space, to have a parking garage in the middle of these dorms than to have this parking space pushed up against the neighborhood, to me.
Do you all want to address that, or not?
Well, we have talked over the years about whether we need a parking deck of one kind or another, and I know we've talked about it, had our architects price it. It's shocking how expensive those things are, and how much, how massive those things are, because they're so thick and multi-story, and the concrete floors are so thick. Not sure we have the geology in the middle of that for a parking deck, and again, that's not really how we're trying to use the space, but, Mr. Gray, I think we have been talking about how we might be able to change some of our parking, and we may be able to see that in a next phase of development. I don't, I don't think we're planning that for here, but we have been talking about how we do that, how we maximize the use of the acreage we do have.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments if you want to speak to this issue?
Good morning, I'm Lanny Lockett, and I live at 607 McMillan's Court here in Danville, Kentucky. And I was listening to a lot of things that was being said, and you were telling me you're trying to get approval here, and you got to go to other avenues to get approvals before the project and actually get started. My first question is, what is going on right now? We've got a lot of machinery going on, and blocking, marking off of land and everything, so what's that, you know, what's that going on right now?
McMillan?
Yes.
Folks, I just might mention, this being a public hearing, that's why we want everybody speaking to the mic, so we have the record of everything that's spoken to with regard to the proposed plan here.
My name is Wayne King, and I'm the Director of Facilities Management at Center. And to answer the gentleman's question, right now, we're doing geotechnical drilling, determining what's under the ground, so we know what we've got to do as far as foundations. And we're also doing, and they should have finished yesterday, a couple of holes for geothermal testing, so we can actually test to see if that ground will accommodate and work with geothermal heating and cooling for that facility.
Thank you.
I have a couple of other questions also. Now, you said you have anticipating data finishing by the fall of 2019, so if you get all this stuff approved, and all your landscaping is okay, when are you anticipating starting to actually break ground?
Once that we get all approvals, we would start configuring things on where we were going to put our foundations, and the foundation work would start hopefully during May, but actual construction of the building probably would not begin before, we may not even be able to get all the beds in before August or some point at that time. But the foundations, getting the geotechnical and geothermal, if we go geothermal, would be done during the summer months to get it in, get it out of the way.
Okay. Another question, we was thinking about the working hours, you know, we were talking about the large amount of noise and machinery and dust flying all around and everywhere, so anticipated, what would you say the work hours be for your workers? Starting like Monday through Saturday, or Monday through Friday, I have to guess some... like Monday through Saturday or Monday through Friday? I have to guess some, not sure.
It would be Monday through Friday. Typically, it's from eight to five. There would be no Saturday work unless it was absolutely a necessity, and we don't anticipate that. When it goes into Saturday work, it costs us money. Vince hasn't given us enough yet.
I'm sorry, I just have, I have all mine written down. Several got, several got answered for me, but I want to add some more because some of the neighbors in the day are probably going to want to know the same thing. I was like Mr. DiMartino. We've, I've lived there in that neighborhood. In November, it will be fifty years. And we have enjoyed a lot going on with Center and everything. And I really miss the old soccer field out there, except for traffic issues and the buses. You know, I'd love to come out and wa, sit on the porch and watch the games going on and everything. We do have children in our neighborhood, and our neighborhood is also known as a big place for the teenagers and college-age kids to hang out and everything like that. And for Center College's purpose, once you start your construction and everything, we've got to say how we're going to do with the kids and everything being on the property. I said, if I was you all, I would recommend you put up some signs saying, keep off the property, because, you know, we can talk to our kids, and you can tell the kids, but one of them is going to, you know, I'm a former educator. One, you're going to always have that one that's going to get over there and you're going to have a child get over that field while construction's going and get hurt. I would not want to have you all liable with a lawsuit for something. No, I was just wondering, are you going to put up signs and they, to keep off the property, you know, while this construction is going on?
Yes, of course. Anytime we do a major construction like this, the property is totally fenced off. You know, all the construction is within an eight-foot fence all the way around. There will be signs. All gates will be locked. The only gate that would be open is when they're bringing equipment in and out during the construction during the day. It's locked of a night, and it's monitored by our public safety buildings of, or crew of a night. So we do everything we can to keep people out of the construction site because it is hazardous. And that's just part of the process that we go through.
All right, that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak with regard to this? Go to the mic, please, introduce yourself and address.
Hi, I'm Margaret Scutchfield, 1591 Lexington Road, Danville, Kentucky. And I'm just trying to clarify, did I hear something about eighty feet between the parking, or what did I hear about that, the distance? And I think some people might not know what a berm is and how tall it would be. And also, speaking to lighting, how that would, you know, the specifics about lighting, I don't know if that's covered at this body. But I thought perhaps specifically, I would like to understand a little more about visualizing what we're talking about.
Jamie, Wayne want to answer that, please?
Sure. This is Jamie Leahy. I think I can address that, buddy. I think I was the one that mentioned the eighty feet. It's about eighty feet if you go from the street to where the start of the building. Given the twenty-five-foot landscaping buffer on the top there, the width itself of the parking lot, the grass in between the parking lot and the building, that, that's the eighty feet I was talking about, kind of back from the street. I, I think we would anticipate having a berm, which is a little hill, along the north side of that parking lot, maybe four or five feet tall, so that as cars pull in and the headlights are pointed that way, they go right into the hill rather than beyond the hill. I'm, I'm trying to think if, if there's an example, another example of it in town. I can't think of one at the moment, but, but there might be such a thing in town that you can see. But that's, that's, that's part of the idea of trying to minimize the impact of light disruption into the neighborhood. We have in, we have in mind having lighting that would be directional down onto the parking lot and not out of the parking lot. We have some lights like that on campus already. And we will work hard to make sure that, that happens. Unless the neighborhood tells us they want, they want more lighting from our lights, we would intend to direct the light directly down onto the parking lot and, and limit the spillage into the neighborhood. Does that answer your questions? I don't know. I, I was asked how tall the lighting is. I'm not sure. About twenty feet. And again, so that it's high enough so that it can be directed straight down onto the, onto the parking area. But then they are, we, we have lights and we, and we would get lights that would be designed to limit the amount of light going out sideways.
Good morning. My name is Tom Ellis. I live at 6571 Perryville Road. My familiarity with both Center College and this entire community began in 1963, when my brother was a student at Center. A few years later, I believe it was 1974, I was here for the opening of the Arts Center. And I've seen all the progress that's been made with Center College, which is one of the reasons that my wife and I decided many years ago to retire here if we could find an older, older home, which we were fortunate to do. We've heard several times, both from Director Hunter and the Attorney for, for Center, about the possibility of a berm. I know that Center College has, for decades, for two hundred years for that matter, been very concerned and sympathetic with the aesthetics of not only their land, but the, the entire development of Boyle County. And I feel that if we could get an absolute assurance that that berm and/or fence and landscaping would take place, I, I feel very confident that the neighbors would find that to be very amenable to their needs. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak with regard to this? The mic, introduce yourself, please, and address.
Tony Gray, Danville, Kentucky, 502 Cloverdale Drive. Jamie and Wayne, the only concern that I kind of have is as you're doing construction and the traffic flow of, you know, those businesses and contractors and things like that. You do have a lot of kids down in that neighborhood that do a lot of street things and stuff like that. So how do you think that construction, do you have a flow or plan, or are you going to try to use, are they going to come in off Main and use that parking lot and go back through there? Or are we going to have a lot come in off Lexington and come through Main, come through McMillan? Yeah, I, I just think that's a little of a concern on, you, that's a big project, and I can see a lot of contractors. And maybe even some, you know, where, where are they going to park? Are you going to park them in that, the parking lot? Where you, where you possibly going to turn down those buildings?
Of course, we're still developing our plans on this. Basically, we would have to come in to a certain degree off of one side or the other, off of McMillan, at least during the day during the construction. We, be hard for us to come in off of Main Street because when they even, they do maneuver back through our parking lot, there's about a twenty-five-foot hill going down into the space. So once we get in there, we're going to try to isolate it so they only come in from one direction on McMillan and not be swinging back and forth through the building or through the, the street. It's one of the things I'll work with these folks with from the word go. The company that we're working with will be Arco Construction. They've done our last six big projects, and they're very responsive to the campus and to our people around here, and they, they work with us well. Again, particularly when we get our initial big equipment in, it'll have to come in through that area. Parking for the construction company, we'll make sure it's on our site, not out in the street. It will not be out, it will affect the population of the community whatsoever. That's just some of the things that we'll stipulate. I've been with Center College well over forty years. Most of you know me. And when I tell you that I make sure that they take care of the community, I'll be the one standing there, not anybody else.
Thank you, Wayne. If you, if you let me come back, Mr. Ellis had a question about whether we would commit to doing those things that we talked about. Yeah, that, that is our plan. We will commit to doing that. The, the, if I'm, if I'm speaking in some vague terms, it's because the plans aren't completely final. But we do have a plan, yes, to do the berm, yes, to do landscaping, yes, to do fence. We're, and we're also happy to talk people, to people about that, what that ought to look like. We want to be sensitive to the neighborhood. And we, and we know that some people may want a larger screen, less of a screen. You know, we, we want to talk about that. But we have, we have time to make those plans. But yes, we will, we will do the berm. That is part of our plan. We will do a fencing. We will do landscaping to try to, again, to try to buffer noise and light, but also on the other side, on the north side of that facing the neighborhood to make it as attractive as it can be. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Nurya Sabate, resident at 599 McMillan Street. And as a neighbor of the affected street, I want to say that most of our neighbors are supportive of the expansion of Center College. However, as Vince has voiced, some of our concerns, we are now, we have a very beautiful green space in front of our houses, which will be very much transformed and impacted by, by the work. It's going to be a three-story building that will occupy basically the entire space, though it's now a, a green space. So it will affect the, the dynamics of the neighborhood. And so it is a very unique project because I believe there are no other big buildings so close to a residential space as this one will be. So if there were any possibility of, you know, modifying the original project as you have it now, and, you know, I'm very supportive of what Vince said, moving it maybe farther away from the neighborhood so we still can enjoy some of this green space, that would be very much appreciated. Also, the lighting was a concern which you have addressed, but, you know, on the weekends, students drive, so there will be noise from the cars, right? They do not drive, I agree, during the, the week, but they do over the weekend in and out constantly. So, you know, these are very, this is going to be a very big impact, impact for our neighbors and, and the people who live there.
They won't be coming in and out from there. They'll be doing what they've always done, which is go to Main Street. They, they won't be able to get out the back.
Yes, but the noise will be there because you can still hear the cars parking and starting and, I believe, right? And also, maybe some more specifics about the fences. So a lot of the comments have been not very specific, right? Like, maybe we'll do that, maybe we'll do something else, maybe we will change these. So once these things become more specific, I think the neighbors would be very, very glad to know and, and be part of, of that. And provide support, but also will be glad to, to have our voices heard.
Yeah, you know, I, I agree with Wayne. If Wayne says that it's going to happen, it's going to happen. And you can trust him to do the right thing. I, I'm, I'm not speaking for any one group here. I have to speak for both because that's our, that's our job as commissioners, is not to take a side, really, is to try to think through this carefully. And I know that Center College, having worked there for almost twenty years, is going to do the best they can to make this project good for everybody. And I just want to bring up all those things because we, I know they've given it consideration already, but, but it's my job as a commissioner to bring those things up and to make sure that we do discuss them in this meeting. That said, I agree with Mr. Ellis, and I think that Center College and the neighborhood are going to come to a very good agreement about what needs to be done on that side, especially the north side, okay? Because we have to. And, you know, and, and Center College has no other recourse except to expand and to acquire properties and to get larger and larger, which I don't really think they want to do that very much more, from what I know the plans were, the, the projected plans. So, so this is a good thing. So, so whatever, whatever agreements and resolutions we come to are going to be something that's probably going to be, set the campus at its limit, and the expansion and things like that is going to be minimal, just in terms of moving things around. I might be miss talking, Jamie, but if I am, let me know. So that, so that it's, it's the most, over, over two hundred years of being a partner with Danville and the county, I think, I don't know of any college that's done a better job. So, I mean, and, and I wish that I had taught there my whole forty years instead of just half of my career. So I know that it's going to work out right. But I think that the devil is always in the detail. And, and, but that's, we're working with no devil, so to speak. We're working with two, two people that are trying to get this to work so that the community stays the same, and everybody has the same great feelings about being a partner in this community. That's, that's all I can say. I, you know, because we could talk about all this all day. And, and really, the projection and the, these are just projections. I mean, I, I've watched Wayne many times. I've seen him look at something and go, oh, because things are going to change because of things they find out, things that happen. So I, I just think, I, I'm, I'm comfortable with voting on this myself now, you know, just myself. But I just know that everybody will get together and do the right thing.
It's, it's worth remembering, too, that we don't have to just take their word for it. The site plan they submit becomes binding on the property. And it does include, for example, a berm on the north side, so.
I think Andrew House is going to make that point, that once, once that proposal, that site plan is presented and approved, they have no options to, unless they come back and get an option to make a change. So once that's approved, it, it basically guarantees that it will be developed or built as proposed.
And I do agree. I, as I had mentioned before, I've worked at Center for eleven years, so I know that they really look for the, the best in the community. However, we don't have very definite answers to a lot of questions. And I think they need to acknowledge that these are, the concerns are there. And we would appreciate, you know, more open communication maybe, which we have started with, with Patrick. So, thank you.
If, if there's a question that hadn't been answered, right now's the time to ask it, and we'll try to get the answer.
Well, I'm talking mostly about specifics, like, you know, the fence. They clearly have not talked about what kind of fence they will.
Ask what you want to know about it, and we'll try to answer it.
Well, what kind of fence are you going to, gonna, are you envisioning there? Or are you going to do something to control the noise on the weekends if students party in the area?
Wayne, do you or Jamie want to address that, or Steve?
And they're going to obviously come up here and make some commitments. Or, I'm going to come back around to the zoning side, the zoning ordinance and the fact that we're reviewing the site plan today. This is, this is a checklist type of approval, as you all know. The zoning ordinance is what we measure site plans against, and then we approve a zoning permit. What Center's, and, and this is maybe what's unfortunate of an institution of this magnitude coming before you guys, and, and neighbors are concerned. But we need to hold them to the same standard we just held Walmart, too, or anyone else. The zoning ordinance is very clear on how we buffer parking lots, what landscape buffers are, the width of those buffers, the plantings in those buffers, fences and lieu of buffers, screening service dumpsters, standard, 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 that they're going to have to comply with. And I'd be glad to explain what those standards are. What Center has done and said in general terms today is we're going to do well above all those standards because it's normally planting or fence. It's normally a ten-foot buffer, not twenty-five foot. To put a berm with landscaping and a fence is kind of the triple approach, which is well beyond what the zoning ordinance requires. You probably haven't seen that at any commercial development or parking lot screened of that magnitude, I guess, in town. I, so I think we have to be a tad bit flexible today. We, it's interesting to hear them commit a berm and maybe specific plantings. And I think they're going to maybe get up here and explain how they maybe want to work with the neighborhood to end up with the final product. But from our point at the Planning Commission, when the zoning permit comes in, we're going to measure that buffer width based on what was committed to today. We're going to look at those plantings in accordance with the zoning ordinance. And we're going to look at parking and all those things in relationship to the zoning law. And again, they are exceeding all those standards as, as we stand here today in our book. And again, I commend them for that. But I understand the neighborhood's concerns, is the specifics on what kind of fence, what kind of plantings, how tall the berm. Those are valid concerns. What's firm that I, I'm reading now is the parking spaces, the building footprints at twenty-five-foot buffer. Those are pretty ironclad as I'm measuring those right now. The exact planting and that buffering width, are the, is the landscape in addition to the berm, on top of the berm, behind the berm, fence, front, back, those are all valid concerns, and that, that's where Center needs maybe, can be, but it's just hard at this level of the project to tell you exactly how that's going to evolve. And I think they want to work with the neighborhood to end up with that final product. So I'll jump.
Thank you, Steve. This is Jamie Leahy again. Part, part of, part of why we're saying this has been our plan, it, it's in the plan, like, like Counsel for the Planning and Zoning Commission has said, it's in our plan to have the berm and the fence and the landscaping. And if we don't have any further conversations, that is exactly what we're going to be doing. We have an eight-foot fence in the plan, and, and that is exactly what we're. trying to leave open a space for us to have conversations with the neighbors to see what the, what ideas they have. Do they want us to change that? Do they not want it to be a, a, a solid fence? Do they want to be able to see through it? I don't know. Our plan, like we said, is to do these things, and if we don't have any further conversations, that's exactly what's going to happen. But we want to leave ourselves open to having those conversations, and we can, we will commit to doing that. We'll reach out to the neighbor, the neighborhood, try to get, meet one, two, three, every meeting, meetings we need to have to have conversations, so we can hear what you have to say, you can hear what, what we have to say. Well, I think we'll come to, I, I think we'll be able to come to an agreement on what we can do with these, but that is our plan. We do have firm plans, we had to file them, and that's what, it is what we would do. We do try to have a, a high level of finish to make it attractive, that's what we try to do with all of our projects. But again, not just for us interior, but for, for the neighborhoods and other, other folks in town to be. So we will, we will commit to working with people, don't mind to do that. We do have a firm plan, we filed it, and we've told you what it is. I just wanted to leave it, leave us open to have some possibility to adjust it based on some conversations. I, I hope that's helpful.
Thank you. Wait a minute, sir, she's next. Yes, ma'am, introduce yourself, please, your address.
My name is Anita Ross. I live at 139 Louise Street. I have lived in this area for X amount of years. As far as Center building, where they're building, I don't have a problem with it. I, I'm not affected about the parking, but as far as the noise that you all were talking about, I come in at night, because I run my son's tattoo shop, and I come in at 12 o'clock at night sometimes on Fridays and Saturdays, I hear a lot of noise. And it's come, well, mainly Hillside, and as you all said, Hillside was going to be cut out. So, are y'all saying that the new building are going to be precisely for the freshmen's or, or what?
That's for the answer.
Yeah. Sure. You're the only one that can.
Okay, sure, sure. Thank you, Ms. Ross. Well, this would it be intended for an upper-class residence? All our students can choose where they live after freshman year. Our guess is the upper-class will sweep into those as opposed to some other places. We don't really assign, but that, that's probably what's going to happen, is the upper-class students will choose to live there versus freshmen. That, that's our plan.
Okay, so with, with the fence and the berm to stop the lighting from disturbing the people on MacMillan, even if you put a closed-in fence there, that still takes away the beauty from the neighbors of seeing what a great job that you all are trying to do for the neighborhood. So, instead of closing it off, have the see-through fence, but fix it where, you know, I, I can't un, I don't, I just don't understand the whole concept of you all just wanting to block us all out like that. Myself, I see, I'm not going to be affected about the building because I'm the last house on the cul-de-sac. In fact, when we bought the house that I'm in, Center sold us 12 yard, 12 feet so that they wouldn't have to build anything beside us. So, I thank you all for that. But I do, I am concerned about my other neighbors, you know? Like I said, I don't have the problem. I live alone, and, you know, the rest of them are right there where they're going to have the lights, and they're going to have the, the noise of people getting in and out of the cars, starting the cars, the lights and all that. So, I just, I'm just curious to that. But I do commend Center for trying to help beautify the area on that.
Again, I'm Lanny Lockett at 607 MacMillan Court. My only thing was, is what I wanted to see, now, I, this drawing to me that I look at is more like a landscape. You know, me being in education, we had a lot of kids that were visual, and all the ideas and the fences and the berms that you think about putting up, what I would have liked to have seen is an actual architectural picture drawing of what this dorm is going to look like with the landscaping around it, with the parking lot and everything, you know? I'm just saying, to me, I'm just looking at that, but it's not really what I wanted to see. I was wanting to see more of an actual picture architectural design. And that would have probably helped me to look into proportion of where it was going to be from the neighborhood, where the parking was, was going to be, you know, really located with the, just a more of a visual drawing. That's, you know, that was, that was what I was hoping to see.
Yes, go to the mic, please, introduce yourself and address.
My name is Denise Terry. I live at 640 North Third Street. I am also city commissioner. And the real question that I am hearing here today is, what's that going to look like from the other side? When, when these residents look out their back doors, what are they going to see? And is there a way for you guys to make some sort of conceptual drawing of that? Because I, I think that's what they're really asking, and correct me if I'm wrong, because that's what I would be asking.
If y'all don't mind my coming back, I think I could have some, have some responses, maybe in reverse order. Ms. Terry, I, I'm sure we can do that. I don't know that we've done it from that particular perspective of the other side of the landscaping and such, but we can probably have our architects do something like that or make it a meaningful, again, and, you know, we can share the conceptual drawings of what, what the building looks like. It's, if you know what Pearl Hall looks like on Main Street, it will be reminiscent of that, it'll look a little bit like that kind of style.
He gives me a better picture.
Okay, okay, sure, sure. I think it was Ms. Ross made the comment about the fencing and maybe not make it, maybe not make it solid. It, it was some conversations like that about whether it should be solid or, or see-through that were giving us some pause about saying this is exactly what we're doing, because I think we need to have some conversations with neighbors about that. You know, our plan is solid, and, you know, some of you were kind of saying, well, we want to know exactly what the plan is, and I'm thinking, well, I think we need to talk to some people about what that, what that ought to be. I mean, we're going to do fencing, it's in our plan, you know, we'll do the fencing, but whether it's solid or, or see-through or something else, I think we can have conversations about that, we'll commit to do that. But, you know, you, you raised a good point. I don't think we're finished talking about the fence. It's in the plan, we're going to do the fence, we'll comply with all the regulations, we'll, you know, it's in the site plan, we'll do all that, but we'll talk with you about that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I have one question. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Hello, my name is Tim Colhan, I live at 129 St. Mildred's Court, and I just have one comment, sort of question. On that site plan, there is not a gate in the little driveway that goes out of the parking lot and onto MacMillan Street. And so we have a promise that there will be a gate there once construction is completed. Okay, I, I'm looking at this, but, so my, my concern is that we have 60-plus new parking spaces, and I just don't know what that's going to do to the traffic in and out onto Main Street. And what I worry about is that there will be a barrage of student complaints that says, we need that gate open, we can't get out of our sta, we can't get out. So I don't know if there's been a study of how traffic would flow, how much it would impact having that many more new spaces with only those in-and-out access points, and whether we can get something more than a promise that that gate will stay closed.
This is Jamie Leahy again. Not sure what you want, Mr. Colhan, more than a promise, thing's part of our site plan. We have no intention of doing it. It's a promise. It's a promise. It's a commitment. I don't know what else I can do.
Vince?
Just one question. I'm assuming that the front of this building is on the south side, right? So, I think what people want to know what the back of the building is going to look like, that's all.
I already said the front and the back is going to be very similar. That was their testimony.
Yeah, I know, I heard that, but I, I just wanted.
The, the front and the back is going to be virtually identical, with the exception of the front, it'll have a little bit of a tower similar to what's Pearl, but it's not going to tower over to the top of the building.
And I just wanted to make, I, that's what I thought you said, and I just want to make sure everybody knows that it is that.
Right.
And it's not, you know, make sure that the back and the front look, you know, nice to the houses that are there.
We'll take care of it.
Anyone else, please? Yes?
Anne Ferguson, Kingsmill Road. I just want to endorse this woman's comment, her observation about why are you blocking us out? Is there some way that Center could be a, a little more friendly to the neighbors, to the community there? I understand, believe me, I understand the need for security on college campuses. I really do. Experience is a great teacher. But is there some way that you could work with these people to make this area, this wall, this berm, this landscaping, a little more friendly to the people who have lived there for a very long time? Thank you.
I think that, that that had been answered when, when Jamie spoke, that he'd be glad to meet and would have meetings with the neighbors to try to come up with an agreeable solution that, that is generally most acceptable to the neighborhood and to Center to try to make sure that every, as much as possible, people are pleased with what's going to be put there.
Sure, thank you. And thank you, thank you for asking the question. It's not our intention to block out people. Part of our intention with the screening and blocking is, is to keep our students from bothering you, but, and then some, some, some people have asked us specifically to do that. So we're, we're trying to achieve a number of things, balance those things, but I, I think through our conversations, we'll be able to come to what it is that is welcoming and not, not, not an adversarial, not a blocking out of people, that's never our intention. We have an open campus. Public member, members of the public are welcome in most areas of our campus, not in our dorms, of course, and nobody would expect that, but, but in our public library, our, our public spaces, we have an open campus. It's not our habit or tradition to try to block people out. I understand what you're saying. Most, most of our efforts here are to try to screen from noise and light and, and traffic and those sorts of things, and it's not a blocking out of people. Hope that that's not misinterpreted.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll declare the public meeting closed at this point with regard to this Chair will entertain a motion from the commission to either accept the plan or reject it.
I'll make the motion that we approve Center College's request for a site plan amendment covering the land located in the MacMillan Row and Louise Street.
I'll second it.
Terry makes a motion, we approve. Mary Beth seconds.
Question discussion on the motion to approve. Hearing none, all in favor? Votes unanimous.
Thank you all very much. Item four, Danville Planning and Zoning Commission filed an amendment to Chapter 9 Future Land Use Plan. Steve, you want to address that?
Yes, sir. I'll give these folks, I think a lot of these folks are going to leave, which makes me feel mixed.
You know, I wanted to say, as long as they meet the minimum requirement above and beyond that, that's.
Well, if you guys are ready, we'll jump on to this item.
Yes, go.
It's been a long meeting, I know, and I'll try to go fast, but near and dear to my heart, this might have been my most, this was the one I was looking forward to the most, I guess, and everyone's left, but.
Go ahead.
This is what it is.
It's a shiny moment.
We're going to talk about amendment to our comprehensive plan that we use every day, we just use it on the zone change, and we're proposing, the staff is proposing amendment to Chapter 9. We talked about it briefly last month, you guys have had a month to look at it, a few little housekeeping changes since last month, some maps, but just want to point out a few things. The front page of the comp plan is up on the screen for a reason. The one that's on the website, that was done, again, maybe not as digital friendly at that point, there wasn't a date of adoption. This body approved the comprehensive plan in its current form, March 1st, 2017. Doing a little housekeeping on that as just better web-friendly. We made an acknowledgements page that currently is not in the plan, it recognizes you guys worked hard, named the planning commissioners that worked on this plan at that point, the staff before me. Again, this is an important page in the document, I thought our document lacked an acknowledgement page and a better cover preference. I just wanted to mention that and point that out, you don't have that, but we're, we're think, as a staff, seriously about a comprehensive plan, it's a big deal, and it's important. What we're trying to do with this Chapter 9 amendment is several things. Clean up Chapter 9, reorganize Chapter 9, add flume categories for the first time in our plan. We don't technically have definitions of our flume categories, add some new flexible categories, institute a future land use map amendment process, add some development review standards that we would look at in zone changes, and obviously the Perryville Future Land Use Map, which drove a lot of this, getting the new map for Perryville, would be part of this adoption as, as figure 9.3. And just as a side note, so you guys know, we have to do a lot of things when we amend the comprehensive plan different when we do a public hearing of this magnitude. We had to put an ad in the paper, we had to notify all the adjacent counties, planning commissioners and elected officials. The state law requires planning commissions to notify everyone that touches our county. They have an ability to comment and look at our plan, because I guess in a sense, our future land use map or our plan could affect a neighboring county. Most of those counties, or none of the counties made a comment, but we did mail the amendment out to everybody, including the bluegrass ad, again, that's required by the statute. Not only that, after we make an amendment, we have to notify them again of what we passed. So it's a pretty burdensome amendment, but we went through all that protocol, worked with Henry and Bruce to make sure we met all the legal requirements to amend the flume. Want to jump into this future land use map, and I'm going to go through it pretty quick, but I want to walk you through and point some things. Page one of the document, again, I hope everything's underlined, strike through for the ease of And we made a lot of housekeeping edits as well as these maps, but I want to point out on page one, there was a population issue there that was brought up from day one on what is Bull County's population and what is it project, projected to be. Again, this plan was just approved in March of 2017, and on page one, you see that our population was projected to be 29,126. And it said that we were basically going to be flat growth. Actually, there is, Bull County is intended to grow. Not only that, the population demographics that you see on the screen up here from the Kentucky Data Center shows we have been growing and we will continue to grow. It's slow, but it's not flat. So we thought we ought to put the number in there right off the state data center, and this is an interesting exhibit, it's hard to see in your packet. These are the counties that are going to grow in the state in green, and the ones in yellow are all going to go backwards in population growth. It's interesting to see the I-65 corridor is pretty visible, but Bull County in- But Boyle County, interesting enough, right there, is going to grow. And all those counties around us, except for Jessamine and Fayette, are going backwards in population growth and well into the future. So I think it's interesting that the future land use is based on how, how are we going to grow? How big are we going to get and what land uses need to be where? So the 2016 data estimate for Boyle County is 30,018. That is actually on the data center's website. It's in this chart. It shows our 2016, 15 growth here. The 16 number's been revised to 30,018. So I put that in that number two as our projected growth, because that is actually where we are today. And again, the, the data center shows us growing on up to the year 2040, well above 32,000 people at about a seven tenths of 1% growth over those years. There's, I've got stats on Danville specifically and numbers. But again, it's interesting that if you look at the growth, study the population, that Boyle's going to grow. These top 10 counties that are going to grow in the state are interesting, too. Fayette and Jessamine's in the top 10 growth counties in the next few years. Those impact Boyle County. When Jessamine grows, Fayette grows, Boyle's, there's a relationship there with employment, housing, other opportunities. And that's why probably Boyle's projected to continue to grow, where some of the other counties south of us, Casey and Lincoln and whatnot, are not going to, are not projected to grow. It's just some side stuff that I think relate to that first page that I thought were interesting, that you guys should look at. So we fixed page two right up, right off the bat, just to put a more current number in. As we move on through the document, and I'll just quickly go through, you can see where we added text, took away text. But the next big page is page three of this document. We had a section called urban service boundary. We've talked about this a few times. This whole section has been moved further down in the document for reorganization purposes and retitled. But where we're at this point in the document, as you know, this dashed line that's shown on the Boyle County map was titled urban service boundary. Yet it went into the neighboring counties. It went all the way north. It was about over a third of the county, yet the future land use was a subset of that. Well, that was clearly not an urban service boundary as it was defined in the plan, because I don't think the goal was to grow Boyle County all the way out to this dashed line in an urban fashion. What that is, is a municipal utility service area as designated by the Public Service Commission for the Danville Utility and Watershed District. So it's been retitled down in the plan to what it is. It's not been changed on the map. That is their legal boundary to extend water and sewer services as a first delivery of services, for example, before septic tanks are put in. Perryville also has a boundary that goes around it for their water area. So again, the old plan had this called an urban service boundary, which in sense means, in, in pure planning terms, means, hey, we're going to grow. That's where we're growing to an urban, that's our goal, is to grow out to a boundary. Lexington has one, but as you can imagine, if we truly had an urban service boundary, it would blanket or tuck closely to the future land use. It would be more like this. So we're not changing this line, we're not proposing to change the line. We're re-titling that document, that, that term, and we're pushing it further down in the document where it should go.
Who drew that line, Stephen Hettig?
Uh, that, that line was, that line was put on the plan back years ago as we did these maps. But that line is determined by the Public Service Commission for the city of Danville on where their watershed service boundary area legally is. So Danville provides water and sewer in that boundary. If, if there's a project that needs it and they come and ask, now, they can waive, for example, someone could say, hey, I'm going to build a project out here and I want to put it on septic. They first have to check with Danville to see if they want it on sewer. If they want it on sewer, you put it on sewer and you wouldn't do septic. So that's Danville's legal boundary for water and sewer services. It's a municipal utility service area, and I checked that with our city engineer, and he actually helped me come up with that term that we use later on in the document. Page four, again, housekeeping. There was some verbiage about the northern bypass, some language that just wasn't consistent. The future land use, again, on the county map and the Danville city map, so you guys know, we didn't change any land use on the map. This is the northern part of the county. We didn't propose any changes to land use, the urban service boundary, or now the municipal utility. But there was some verbiage in the plan that maybe was left out or not looked at that talked about the northern part of the county would be commercial or whatnot, or have growth potential. And I think it was put in the document, like you see on page four, at a time when there were other future land use categories on the map that eventually were revised. So when the map ended up in this configuration with mostly agriculture and some residential, it seems like the text that was left on page four didn't gel with what actually the map indicated. So I, I've talked with some different folks. I think it was suggested that we should just strike that text and let the map govern what the future land use is. And over time, if it changes, it changes. But this text did not match, again, with what the current map, and that map has not been revised. So flipping on through, won't get into all these strike throughs. Next big section's on page eight. Location principles for urban land uses. All of that verbiage is still in the document. It's just been moved down where the rest of the verbiage, where we look at development proposals. It was interesting to me that there was stuff in the comprehensive plan, chapter nine, in this part of the document. Yet you had to go to the back to find the clear directives on how we use the flume and how we make development decisions. So all this has just been relocated in the document, basically. Probably the next big change in chapter nine, again, is page 17. Page 17 is where it now says municipal utility service boundary. The, the sentences are basically the same. They read fine. This is just not an urban service boundary. So now it's where it should be in the plan, in my opinion, and it now says that's what it is. The next couple pages, again, just housekeeping in nature. Next major issue is on, and this is a big change, is on page 20 of your document. I, I thought it was interesting in chapter nine of the comprehensive plan titled future land use and future land use maps, that we had very little guidance about what a future land use map is, how it's used, what the state law says, and, and some other issues. So this now is new text all the way down through 20, 21, 20 and 21, on what a future land use map is, how we use it, how it's a generalized map, and what the state law says on how we review zone changes. Very clear that we follow the map, we follow the plan, or developers have other options under the KRS to move forward. We turn to page 22 of the document, and I think, let me go backwards here for a second. I don't think there's anything on here. Page 22, again, we did not have any definitions. We just heard a case for public semi-public future land use. Yet we had no definitions in our document on what agriculture is, commercial is, public is, residential. There was no document, no document or no guidance in here to tell us what those standards are. Zoning's real clear. We know what zoning districts are, but what are future land use categories? Our map historically has said the words agriculture, low density, multifamily, but what are those? These are now definitions of all of those, and there's an interesting twist here. Our low density, moderate density, and high density are density-based definitions. So low density is single family, but it's one dwelling unit to five dwelling units per acre. Again, what we had before just said low density. So in theory, someone could come in, say, I'm going to do a subdivision in the yellow. We'll go back to the, we'll go to the Danville map, give you example. Somebody could come in under the old map and say, oh, it's residential. And I want to do single family on the map. And they would propose a zone change, and we would look at and go, well, it's in compliance with the map. But it might be 12 units to the acre. It might be eighth acre lots. It might be 5,000 square foot lots. This low density threshold now saying we're going to do up to five units to the acre, which is basically up to about 8,000 square foot lots, which will normally is compatible with whatever residential might be on the fringe, whether they be one acres or half acres or quarter acres. The moderate density category still allows you to do single family, lets you start to do some multifamily, but again, in a density scale that's, that's captured. And then high density is obviously apartments and more than 16 units to the acre. So by going to density base, I think it gives better guidance for folks on how we're going to utilize the map. We left the yellow exactly the same, but when I said we didn't change the map, we did change the legend. So where it said residential, it now says low density residential. And where it said multifamily, we made that say moderate density. And there's no high density on the map anywhere, because we didn't have high density, and we took the conservative approach, which was to convert, convert the multifamily to moderate density. And if someone wants to come in and do high density, they can procedurally amend the map. There's now new mixed use categories. None of those categories are currently in Danville or Boyle County. Those are flex categories. However, the Perryville map, which was spent a considerable amount of time on, has the flex categories. This is mixed use residential in their downtown area, and this is the mixed use employment targeted area as a job creator. These mixed use categories are very flex, pick and choose categories to give communities the ability to develop in a certain way. None of those categories currently are in Danville or Boyle County. They're on the legend, but there's, again, we didn't change, we didn't change the maps in Danville or Boyle County, but Perryville's is brand new. So that, that, that tool's now in this chapter. If a developer wants to come in and say, hey, I'd like to do mixed use residential, they would procedurally have to amend the map somewhere to do that. There's none allocated in Danville or Boyle County. But now the definitions are in there. The next big issue is on page 24. With looking at a zone change, we always want to look at our future land use map, but there needs to be clear guidance on what scale and style of development we're going to allow. You heard a lot of questions a minute ago about traffic. We don't have anything that gives us clear definitive way to evaluate traffic or environmental concerns with zone changes. We had a little bit of general guidance earlier, and we've moved all that here for residential and commercial. But there's some new paragraphs here that would trigger traffic studies for commercial, industrial, and residential developments of a certain caliber, but only at a zone change. We wouldn't catch those at the site plan level. We wouldn't catch those at the zoning permit level. This is only if a zone change is being proposed. This is what we would look at in addition to the comprehensive plan map. These are things we'd like to see a developer address. So there now is traffic impact studies for residential, commercial, and industrial. 500 average daily trips, for example, in the residential setting would be a subdivision, at least 50 lots or more. If you look at a traffic engineering manual, a single-family dwelling generates approximately 10 trips a day. So 50 average, 500 average daily trips is 50 units. Terry's looking at me like he doubts that fact. That is actually a standard, 10 trips a day is what a single-family dwelling unit generates. And that's because typically, two cars, maybe kids that drive. You come and go more, you take your kids to soccer, you go to the store, you go to work, some people come home for lunch. In an apartment situation, multifamily, two-bedroom dwellings generate 9.6 trips a day. Less than a single family. There's a whole manual that Jim may know, it's, it's a traffic generation manual that tells you exactly what a drive-through generates, if it's a bank, or a McDonald's, or a pharmacy, or a single-family dwelling, or a three-bedroom apartment. And so what we're saying is if you're going to generate more than 500 average daily trips, which typically means you're going to impact an area pretty substantially, you should do a traffic study as, as something we can review at the zone change. And we'll go back to our distillery case we had not long ago. Had a traffic study been done, someone would determine whether or not they're going to generate that many trips. If they're under it, they don't do it. If they're over that projection, they do a study, and if the study says, we need to turn lane, we need a traffic light, we need a road widening, the planning commission then has the ability to evaluate that and decide if you want to make those conditions of the approval. That's how most communities handle developments. They don't wait on the state to build roads. If a developer's going to impact the road majorly, it's the developer's responsibility to mitigate that impact. And that's what these small policy directives are saying. All we want is a study. If you're going to do something of that caliber that we anticipate you're going to affect traffic. So the same verbiage is there for residential, commercial, and industrial. Yes, sir?
So with a dorm of 182 students and 500 trips a day, they would be well over...
They wouldn't do it. They wouldn't do it. I'll tell you why. Because in, in the college institutional setting, cars are warehoused. That, that trip generation manual shows you, there's a difference between a normal multifamily structure and then a institutional structure of, on a university, because the students don't come and go daily as much as a typical... You know, if three 20-year-olds live in an apartment, they're going to come and go at a different rate than three 20-year-olds that live on a campus. And those trip generation numbers are well below that nine number, because they do warehouse their cars. It's more weekend in-and-outs than average daily trips that come in and out of a specific parking lot. So the number would be, there is a number that's, a certain cap on the dorm room would hit that number, but 184 beds would have been close, probably, but we'd have to have an engineer... That's, that's how this works, is if they need a traffic study, or let's say they do a zone change, we would suggest that they may need a traffic study. We would ask them what they're going to do, then we would go to the manual and assess, are they going to hit the 500 mark? If so, we'd suggest they do a traffic study and submit it with their zone change. If they're under the threshold, then they don't submit one. That's kind of how it works. The manual's huge, and you get online and read all the trip generations, pretty amazing how they generate. I mean, it gets down to a veterinarian clinic versus a daycare, how many people, how many bedrooms, all that, that's referenced.
Just a real quick question. So a residential, a trip, is that a round trip, or is it one trip out, one trip out?
In, outs, two.
Okay, thanks.
So 10 trips is what a single-family dwelling typically generates. It, it sounds high, but that, so 50 units would be kind of... So in my experience, what's happened is when someone proposes a, a zone change, guess what they do? They always suggest they're only going to build 49 homes, so they don't have to do a traffic study. And a lot of times, the, the infrastructure's already in place where the traffic study may say, everything's fine. At least we're going to have an evaluation. So the, then, again, we spent enough on that. These are general development standards. These were already in the document. They were called timing of development or location principles. Really, the only new thing are those traffic studies. You turn to 20, page 26, and right below the detailed traffic study, I guess I took a liberty that I, I... Hearing from what I've heard already in the community, pipelines and water quality, and this, this is a standard that would require an environmental assessment for larger industrial developments. So if someone came in with a great big industrial project, the planning commission would not only see a traffic study, the developer is required to do what's called a detailed geological analysis, which is basically a phase one plus a few extra review criterias. Looking at groundwater, telling us if they're going to cause any hazardous materials that might spill into the, the water, how they're going to handle their stormwater. This is a very standard language that most communities use. What's different, and where I took the liberty, was the 20 acres. A lot of communities require this at five acres for industrial development, or three acres. Some do it for 50 or 100. I put 20 in there as just sort of a starting point. That seems fair. If someone's coming in with a 10-acre development, or a three-acre body shop, or junkyard, do we really want to require people to do environmental analysis? 20 acres for industrial development of a bigger scale, it makes sense if you've got more trucks coming and going, idling, those kind of things, bigger factories. So that's for you guys to think about, in or out, but it seems to work. I don't see it would be a big burden on most folks. It's not, again, it's a phase one environmental study, really, is what it is. Yes, sir?
On page 25, that second bullet point, electric telephones, cable TV utilities should be placed underground. Is that saying in all, if the qualified...
It was already in the book. It's already in the book. It's, it, these are general, what they're references, general guide, or guidance for residential development. So when a zone change comes in, if we get one, we had some verbiage in here about these slopes and these other things that I guess we would look at each time in addition to the map. And it's a, it's a guiding principle. So if a developer, we would ask the developer, hey, we'd like to see it be of this style. He could still choose, say, I'm not going to do that, there's a particular reason I can't do that. But in general, what we're saying is that residence development should have streetlights, sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, and all the utilities are placed underground.
And to follow up on Jim's questions, more and more people are not using cable, you know, under, you know, they're maybe going to satellites or dish and so forth. So that may be sort of arcane to put that in there, and same thing with phones.
Yeah, I, I agree. It was language that was in there, and it's, what you want now really is, you want to make a decision, do you want probably electric, as the commissioner's pointing out? Do you want that to be overhead or allowed overhead in an urban environment? Or would you prefer that to be placed underground? Most good developers bury all those things anyhow. They don't typically put a lot of overhead lines into their subdivisions. But a lot of times, you get some three-phase lines, or some just nothing you can do. But we could strike the word telephone and cable.
I think they need to be buried, but this, to me, it says that you have to have it. And there's options, obviously.
Yeah, it says should have.
Look to me, Jeff, it's like we're trying to...
Well, the first sentence says should have. The second sentence says those things should be placed underground. I, I agree. I mean, I, the sentence... I mean, I, the sentence is, we got the
Well, that's your interpretation. I'm good with it.
I'll do what you guys like on print.
That's the interpretation, that it's
I'm looking at it as two sentences. The first one is the shall. The second one is those things should be placed underground.
Two sentences.
Henry's sitting down there. He's, he's the legal mind. But there's a shall and a should in two different sentences.
Where's, where's the shall? Sorry. Where's the shall?
Oh, it's should in the first one. I'm sorry. Two shoulds. There you go.
Two shoulds. I think the statutes say that the plan is to be used as a guide for action. And there's, there's a lot of case law saying that they're not binding.
It's just something we were supposed to lay on the table when a project comes in and make the developer address them. And again, that's why the staff report had some verbiage in it. A lot of times, we just look at the map. As you all know, a zone change comes in, we just look at the map, say, is it in compliance? They're supposed to at least try to address these, or it gives you guys the ability to add conditions. So enough of the general guidance. Let's get on to page 27. I know we've been here a while. And future land use map. This is kind of big stuff for the community, and this is new. Page 27 talks about what our map is, and why we have a map, and why the state law requires it, and why we follow it. So those first couple bullets are, are kind of a big deal. And there was nothing in chapter nine that said the future land use map is really what we look at. Even though you have to be in compliance with the plan, goals, and objectives, on and on, the map matters and needs to matter. That's why we had to add exceptions to the map. There, there's some situations where the map just can't be used against an applicant. There are errors. There are emergencies. There are little, small parcels that have been split, that we figured out, that you just can't hold people to that level of the future land use map is the be-all, end-all, when parcels are like they are. So these exceptions say, we have a map. If you're proposing a development and we look at the map, if you're one of the exceptions, you guys have the ability to not follow the map. And those are going to rarely happen. The next part on page 28 says how we amend the map. Now, right now, there's been some folks that think the map is static for five years. We look at the plan every five years, or whatever. That's the map. It never changes. That is not how most communities handle future land use map planning. The map is supposed to be a fluid, breathing, livable document that changes over time with the economy, with the market, with great ideas. It's used to evaluate zone changes under the state law. This now puts a procedure on how the map could be amended, and it's a high bar. It's a real high bar. The bar is that someone would have to come in here and show us, if they're not in compliance with the map, we're following the map unless you can prove to us why that map should be changed. So a zone change that's not in compliance, the developer has two options. I'll just ignore the comp plan. I'll follow the state law and make the old major changes argument. But now that we put verbiage, if we put this in the book, that we're going to amend the map procedurally, and the map is of, it matters, I think it would be very disingenuous to the planning commission to come in and say, you know what? I read your comp plan. I'm going to make the major changes argument. I, I don't see that I need to follow the map. When we have a process now that you can amend the map procedurally. File your application for a flume amendment. Let us hash it out. And if it's valid, then you can go on to your zone change. If it's not valid, I guess you could still go on to your zone change and make the major change. But you at least ought to attempt to amend the map procedurally and prove to the planning commission why we should change it. And we'll just grab an area on the map right here on the edge of town. I don't know exactly where we're at, but there's a lot of yellow right there. And that's why, well, let's get down here on the bypass. That's better. You got commercial of some weird depths, and then some residential. You know, if someone came in here on the corner and said, you know, you've got that residential, but I want to do, I want to do a commercial section. Well, we'd look at the map and say, not in compliance. Well, what this process would say is you have to come in and, you have to come in and procedurally amend that map for your footprint, and you have to do it based on these principles. The first one says a demonstrated override public benefit. Not going to happen for most developers. The second one is that the map is wrong, or there was an inconsistency or a major error. But the third one says you'd have to do a compatibility assessment. So you have to come in and show us why we should change that from low-density to commercial. And I'm just thinking outside the box, but look at that little commercial sliver. Who could do anything on that little end footprint? It's probably 80-foot deep. So if someone came in and said, well, I would like to do a little retail on this corner, and my justification is it's already partially commercial. You only got 80-foot of future land use for me, and, and I would like to do approximately about a 5,000 or 10,000-square-foot retail box here. They would still have to come in and show how they're compatible, how they blend with the neighborhood. If you really read what that third bullet is, this compatibility, they pretty much have to tell us how they're going to look, parking, landscape, all the stuff you just heard, to procedurally amend that map. You guys are the final decision on that. That appeal would go to circuit court. If someone came in to file a flume amendment, you guys up or down voted. And if you say, no, we like the map the way it is, the map stays the way it is. If you all think the map should be amended, well, then they could go on to their zone change, either at the same meeting or a future meeting. So this, this is new to amend future land use maps. But most communities do amend their future land use maps procedurally, not by the planning commission, and not by the staff, usually by the developers or the applicants. So this is new in the plan. The last
That's another step that we're adding.
It would be another step, but only at a zone change. Only if they're not in compliance with the map. Now, Jeffrey and I have talked about, Commissioner Baird and I have talked about this just a little bit before this kind of came about. And it's interesting, because he's made a comment, and I think it's valid, is you got to trust your map. You got to assume your map's correct. Because if your map's wrong, this whole process really doesn't work well for a developer or for the community. And unfortunately, we think our map's pretty good. But when you look around and you see this in-and-out future land use, you see some of these depths, it looks like we need to do some housekeeping on the map. But, but it's clear, I could see why a developer would want to attempt to amend the map to fix some of these kind of oddities that we have. Look at Houstonville Road. I mean, you've got retail, commercial, residential, and, I mean, just, there's no flow to a generalized map. The whole corridor ought to be mixed-use residential. This, this commercial ought to be probably 800-foot depth or so of just commercial or mixed-use employment. So I would understand actually why someone would have trouble looking at our map and getting clear guidance on what we really want a development pattern to be, for example, around the bypass. You know, there's no high-density. There's some targeted multifamily. But the way these parcels are shaped and some of these footprints, it just, again, you just see little pieces that are sort of stuck out with any, no consistency on the map. So what I hope is by amending the map, our map starts to get better, number one. Starts to reflect the market. But the goal here is to have integrity in the map, that when people look at our future land use map from other communities, and they're making development decisions. I want to let you look at Perryville, Perryville's map now. Way more generalized, very clear, mixed-use residential, commercial, moderate density. Some stuff staying low. The community, through an in-house exercise, went through parcel by parcel, and we relabeled their map where they would like to see the community grow. And even though there's various zoning districts here, this mixed-use residential is what they feel fits in their downtown to let people live, shop, have a business, or have a combination. But it's not appropriate past this street. So you go back to the Danville map, and you start to see this pattern, and you start to see why either we need to do a housekeeping exercise on the Danville map, or the, the amendment procedure may take care of that for us. So in going back to Perryville, there's where their map started like, you guys. This was in the 2007 map plan, and it was just carried forward to 17. Their whole circle, which is, which is shown as residential, on folks' farms, out on roads where there's no development potential. It was just all yellow. And then there was little pockets of where we, this was really existing land use is what that was. And then again, that's their new map.
Can I ask Jeffrey a question?
Sure.
Do you have a sense of what, what would be better served is if we did the housekeeping? Or if we just left it to the developers? What's your thought?
That's what we will do our next, I don't know how far out we are for, we're not that far out. I think, are we for our, our next comprehensive plan?
Yeah. So it's interesting. It's a good question. So this, and Henry jumping here, I don't want to talk like, I know this. But the KRS says that planning commissions, every five years, are supposed to review their goals and objectives. Doesn't say you have to write a new plan every five years. Doesn't say that. Says you're supposed to review the goals and objectives and the elements for relevancy. Most comprehensive plans may stay 10, 15 years, and you just either ratify the goals and objectives every five years if you're still good. If your plan's still good, you just re-adopt it, is what you do. But what we, I think, have done is say, hey, we need a new comp plan every five years. And we hopefully get new future land use maps. But future land use maps ought to evolve just as we hear cases, as the market changes. The whole plan needs to be looked at at least every five years. The goals and objectives, interesting enough, for this plan were adopted in 2012. So the goals and objectives of the city and the county that did them, did them in 2012. We never got around to adopting the plan as the planning commission for the technical elements to 2017. So this fall, the five years is up to actually get back into the goals and objectives. But my guess is after reading them, we just used them in the zone change case, they're still pretty relevant. And they still read pretty well, because they're kind of generic. So what we would do in that case is we'd bring you the goals and objectives again. You guys would look at them, and if you thought they're still relevant, we would then send them back out for the governments to re-ratify.
I think it was more asking about the map.
The maps
Should we do the housekeeping on the map? Or should we?
Well, I think we'd do both. I think we need to address some deficiencies in the map, clearly. And I think it's just such a big task to take on entire cities. So what you might do, for example, is we might just take the southern part here and say, okay, let's, let's look at this and think about how those categories might be better labeled. Let's not split parcels. Let's not, you know, leaving gaps. I mean, you know, this is the urban edge, and we got agriculture little slivers in here. We could clean it up. And again, some developers may came in and say, you know what? You've got this as commercial right here, and I want to do industrial instead. So maybe they come in. But I, I see that just evolving over time. That's why the amendment process
I think you hit the nail on the head. I think the map more reflects current use
Current use, exactly.
Than it does future land use.
You're exactly right. It's more an existing land use map and current zoning than truly a future land use map. Because it wouldn't look like that. It would look more like that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, okay.
So what are we saying that we, how do we get it to look like that? Are we saying kind of a hybrid of us doing both housekeeping?
Yeah, I think we do that over time. But the amendment process is important to help a developer also lead us there. Because again, we're not going to have every good idea. We don't know everything that's going to happen. I've had developers call me this week, last week, walked them around town on a project, and they're like, I don't understand your future land use map. Do you want commercial, or do you want residential? And I said, well, what are you proposing? That's a perfect example. What is your idea, and how is it compatible? And come explain that to the planning commission formally through a process. That's what we want to see happen in our community, I hope. Yes, sir?
This, the criteria for change would have helped us on that distillery where we had a AR1 left over in the, the industrial park. And, and Winfield wouldn't have had to tell us the brewing industry went through a major change in order to re-sign that right.
Yeah, sure. And, and that's what's, and that's what's a little bit bothersome, is what we don't want in our community is to have developers come into your town, look at your future land use map, shrug their shoulders, and say, let's make the major changes argument, simply because there's a new sewer line north of town. It's not what you want. You want them to come in and want to amend the map, because it's the law. And then procedurally, we get to evaluate it against their proposal and make a decision whether it's premature or it's appropriate to do. That's just the essence of planning, in a sense.
And this gives us a procedure.
Yeah, you don't want to see them go that, that other route. But they still have, under the law, they still have the ability to say, I'll make the major changes argument. The road's been widened. That's my justification. So now I'm putting, I want to put a building there. You guys now, if you do this, you put a process that at least indulges and try to amend the map. We're making a, a high bar, but it's a pretty low, I mean, you just file an application, come before the planning commission for a flume amendment. And we can even tie them together at the same meeting, if that's what we need to do, timewise. So that, that's kind of everything. Again, those maps are referenced in this section, by the way. So what happened on the Boyle County map, again, we just fixed the legend to match the categories, relabeled that urban service boundary municipal utility service. But the Perryville map is a complete redo. So formally, this amendment would also be bringing these maps forward as our official future land use maps is 9-1, 9-2, and 9-3. So, and that's me. I'd be glad to answer any questions, and there may be some folks that have questions.
Any comments from the public with regard to the proposed changes to chapter nine of the future land use? Yes. Go, Mike, introduce yourself. An address. Sorry about that. A public hearing, we just got to have it on record.
Anne Ferguson, Kingsville Road. Charles and I have been members of the steering committee of Smart Growth Boyle for several years. As such, we have attended meetings of the Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning Commission, the Board of Adjustments, and the Technical Review Committee. We have been pleased to see the office and the commission evolve into a more user-friendly, into more user-friendly entities, serving the needs of the public. Last month, we were pleased to hear positive reports on Planning and Zoning Director Steve Hunter. And he is certainly to be commended for the open house in Perryville to present and discuss the Perryville flume. It was another step in expanding transparency. We have read and discussed the chapter-nine revisions. While much of the work is cleanup and reorganization, there are some new items. One is mixed-use development on pages 22 and 23. While there are currently no developers using this, there is one large mixed-use development in Lexington, the summit at Fritz Farm. That's as opposed to the traditional retail shopping mall that we are accustomed to. At that location, the developer included residential, retail, and office space. People can live, work, and shop all in one area. This kind of development is especially attractive to millennials and to retirees. Neither group desires to be surrounded by green nothingness. A second change is the requirement of a traffic impact study for certain residential and commercial developments. This is an area of planning that has been sorely neglected. One only has to drive around the shopping centers on the South Danville bypass to understand the need for attention to be paid to traffic impacts from ever-expanding commercial developments. While what is done cannot be undone, there is hope for more concern about traffic patterns in the future. And we heard reference to traffic during the discussion of the center plans. Thank you for your serious attention to these chapter-nine revisions. We believe they are another step forward in working together for smart growth development. I appreciate your indulgence this morning.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Any questions for the commission? Do we want to approve this today, or, or still study it and approve it at the next meeting, Steve? I mean, I guess it's a pleasure of the commission, of course.
It's, it's your all's pleasure. You had it last month. If it feels there's more to think about, we need to think about it. Perryville's ready to go on their part. They're, they're excited about the map. I told them this is the process, though. Part of chapter nine, and, and there were other housekeeping things we wanted to put in together. So you could either pull them apart, I think, and adopt the Perryville map if that's what you want, or you could adopt the chapter-nine collectively. It's your call.
Chair is open for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We adopt it.
Jeff moves. We approve or adopt?
Ed Sackens. Questions, discussion on the motion to adopt as presented. Hearing done. All in favor? Don't unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you.
All right. Under new business, budget committee report, we have nothing. Under new business, budget committee report, we have nothing. Personnel committee report, nothing. Advisory committee report, nothing.
Well, just that the advisory committee looked at this on back before, too.
Yeah, we did. Okay. Zoning permits? Any comments on that? Everybody's got a copy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other new business for the good of the order?
I know we've been here a long time. I just want to show you one more slide up here. I know you guys have sat a long time. Everyone's hit the restroom, but I just... This is big stuff, and just give you a preview. There's the zoning map we used on the distillery, paper maps. You guys know you gave me a little authorization work with the Bluegrass ad. I just want to show you some top-secret stuff coming, fixing to come out for the community.